Morning, everybody. All right. Looks like we have a core. Now that we need a core, but let's get started gender review. Future items. Go ahead, Tony. Oh, and then Paul, sorry. I saw Tony's hand visually go up all.
Go first. Or I'll go first. I just wanted to discuss briefly. I sent you guys. I actually had to watch our meeting again from last Thursday. I sent you guys a time breakdown. And I don't know when you'd like me to address it. I can certainly do it at Council comments. The agenda at some point where we look to, and it's not because of me. I know you all think that I lose patience, which I do at eight thirty, but you know, people are waiting for their items. It seems like a lot of wasted time. So I'd like some feedback from you guys. Not now, but I just wanted to give you a heads up. Thanks.
I mean, I think this is exactly the right time to probably literally we do. We're talking about agenda changes and future items. I think there's probably no better time. So. Yeah, I mean.
Well, so Jonathan, if you see. You know, we had almost eighteen minutes of council comments and didn't really do anything consent agenda, of course, was quick. P and Z appointments took about a minute and a half as I imagine the appointments tonight will. Then we talked about the train for Utah for about twenty seven minutes. Then self canyon for twenty two minutes, then the pit for an hour and seven minutes with a vote to postpone. Then the South Canyon fees only six minutes merchandise store ten minutes. Tourism board changing change. That was really quick. It just seems our focus isn't clear. And I think some of these items could be best discussed at a time like this. As opposed to on a regular meeting where we seem to get sidetracked and go on and on and on and on. Thank you.
Yeah, no. And so like just in that example, and I hesitate to use one agenda as kind of the litmus test for everything. You know, I think it'd be better maybe to look at. Say your last three or four in aggregate and go, okay, is there ways we can do other things, but. You know, my days get pretty busy. So I think if we take things off of at least my opinion potentially is if we take things off the evening agenda, put them onto work sessions, then we're just moving work from. The evening to the day, and I don't, I don't know if that's helpful. And then I think there's some things that we just need votes on.
Okay.
And I don't know. I mean, like in that agenda, what are things that you would have taken? Yeah, go ahead, Charlie.
I know Paul wanted to comment on this too. I chatted ahead of course came up, but I don't want to get into Paula.
Go ahead, Paula.
Um, I had other comments, but in regards to this, I believe. We're a council and a council needs discussion. And sometimes the only opportunity we. The only opportunity we get for the all of us to get together and talk is during a council meeting. I haven't had a problem with the amount of time that we spend for council meetings. I kind of put it in my schedule that those evenings are taken up with that. And I know. There's a bit of a hurrah when we get done at eight, eight thirty, but. To go to ten o'clock at night just does not seem unreasonable and it allows us time. To talk about things, which also kind of gets back to one of my comments later, which is right now we're getting minutes that are just votes. And we're not really, you know, I have to go back and watch a recording of meetings to see what the discussion was. So it'd be great to get a little synopsis of that back and forth, or at least what each council member said, not necessarily public comments. So. I'm a person that. Things you communicate to make a decision. So I'm okay with it. And go ahead, Charlie.
Thanks, Paul. Yeah, I guess Tony, I understand sometimes that. We we drag on. I think it's a tough call for the mayor to make sometimes is when, when do we cut off the comments? I think we've got to be what all have to be watchful of repeating things. Ingrid and I were at a parks meeting last night. I think there were times and they just kept getting repeated and it was dragging. And I think we've done the same thing. I think another place where we could be more efficient and Paul and I have talked about this as well, and that is. The concept that when people are going to make presentations, if it's in the packet and I've read the the presentation, including the powerpoint and things. A quick run through for those is important for the public. But hopefully we can, we can keep the presentations down to five or 10 minutes, depending on the scope of the project, like for instance, in our work session next this thing on the. On the city design status, that's going to take some time. And there's a lot of information in that that part of it. And it's going to be a work session, but it's going to take time. And I suspect that's going to become be a. Significant discussion when it gets to be an agenda item, which I assume is going to be the next meeting or two. So Tony, I fully agree with you. I just, it's a real delicate balance. And I think, you know, if. I think we had to, if we could do it in a diplomatic way, I'm trying to be diplomatic here, Tony, but we do it diplomatic way, you know. Maybe Mr. Mayor, I think we've all had a chance to comment. It's just time to call the question. And just kind of raise it and remind, you know, Jonathan, where we are. Jonathan, I think you're doing a better job of cutting things down, but. You know, there's something that's one of the issues we have, what we got to watch for. So that's my thoughts on your idea, Tony.
Yeah. And I think, you know, Deborah's been making a push to get us to take votes on things to provide clarity for staff, because I think that is possibly the biggest. Waste of time for everybody is when there's not clear direction for staff and and some of us feel some way and we insist that it's this way and we heard it that way. So. I appreciate. Sometimes like Deborah making the hard call to make us take a vote because maybe we don't want to take a vote and we all want our things to go the way it is. But a lot of these things I'm seeing on these agendas are vote taking agenda items with the exception of the. The train, the oil train, it wasn't, it was, I think it was a seven minute presentation. But then actually we control a lot of what goes on, you know, when we ask questions of the presenter, when we, you know. Get wrapped around the axle or, you know, discuss some of these public issues or concerns, you know, it's been covered now. And I shared with everybody, the Aspen Times article is in the Colorado Sun. So. You know, to devote twenty five minutes to something like that, I think, you know, seven of that was was the actual presentation and the rest is on us. So if we don't want to. Have something like that last a half hour for the public to see the presentation and our debate and questions. Then I think it's on us to to shut the debate off. So go ahead.
Mayor, you make a good point, just real quick, that this is just a snapshot. So I'm going to do this for every meeting and I'm going to go back. But I'll just say to Paula, you know, you may be willing to go to ten o'clock, but there are people with children and who have jobs. There's nobody going to be at this meeting this morning. People are taking their kids to school. It is unreasonable to ask me to be here at eight thirty to do this meeting, to come back at three thirty, plus I have a real job. Then at six and then to be tend to still be as sharp as I would be at six or seven. So that's just my point, but. I just respectfully disagree with Ms. Step. Thank you.
Yep, Tony, I agree that we have a lot and I was kind of surprised that we're starting again at three thirty this afternoon. I thought the. Reason for the eight thirty meeting was to get us to start later in the day, but. I was really just referring to the actual. Council meeting, not the work sessions.
Thank you.
Ingrid, I saw your hand go for.
You did. Yeah, I just took it off because I I thought I was next. So I'm just going to apply kind of a theory or philosophy that we have in our own house, and that is manage thyself. So a few years ago, it seemed like my kids were always bickering, even my spouse and I were bickering. What we realized is that ultimately the only person that we can truly manage is ourselves. So if you have a problem with this, the length of the meeting. You're welcome to express a concern for it. I think Tony brings up a valid point that we could be more efficient for the sake of the community. But I also think that each individual counselor. Has was elected in order to satisfy, you know, the their constituents' needs and and their style was obviously the one, hopefully, unless you ran unopposed. That was elected. So you can take the feedback you receive from your fellow counselors. We can all do better, but you know, even an interruption, you know. Counsel Hershey, even an interruption takes time to get back on track. So, you know, we can maybe all do better on reading the. The packet. We can all do better on not repeating questions. We can all do better in in our own capacity, but then at that point, we all need to just manage ourselves. And that means showing up, being prepared and making sure that we ask good questions and we're good listeners and we're not distracted by other variables around us. But I think that it's the combination of everything, maybe repeated questions or overly pontificating, you know, observations. And interruptions of one another that are the cumulative to make us ineffective. So I think that that we could all just, I'll say it one more time, manage ourselves. We can do better at these meetings and and do a better job for our community.
Yeah. And I think, you know, I think for all of us, I think taking each one of those things, I think it's it's easy to look and go, wow, that's a long meeting, but then. I think it's it's important to us to go, this conversation seems to be taking too long of a time. And I don't mean to, you know, beat beat up Mike Pritchard, you know, three or four meetings ago, when he talked for a long time. It's very difficult for me, anyway, being the really generally nice guy I am to cut people off and say, you had five minutes, you've taken fifteen, you're done. I'm sure there's a lot nicer way to do that, but I also do need probably some help from some, again, nice encouraging help from council to say. Hey, you know, we have a long agenda and I maybe we want to kind of wrap it up. Those kinds of things really help me out. And I'll say, you know, I think if we're talking about some of these topics, you know, in again, it's just one specific agenda, but. If we're talking about a PIF, that's we're talking about a twenty million dollar. Fee for the community for fifteen years. And five million dollars to the city. To say that doesn't deserve sixty seven minutes of our time. I I think I'd have to respectfully disagree with that. I think it's good. And and we ended up that sixty seven saying. Minutes saying, wow, we need a whole nother session and two more months to even contemplate it. So I don't think that that's not enough time. I think twenty seven minutes to hear a presentation and ask questions about the impacts of a waxy crude oil train that is regionally covered and covered in statewide publications for us to. Understand what's going directly through the gut of our town and along our water source. I think twenty seven minutes is is. If something happens or this blows up, I mean, both of our centers are aware of this. We have a lot of information on this. So I think for that to. Only devote twenty seven minutes of it, if that's all we devote to this thing ever. I think the community is going to go like, why, why aren't we more involved? Why aren't we hearing this? I don't hear from the community. That our meetings are too long or we talk about things too much. What I hear is I didn't know about it. How come we we don't seem to hear about these things? I came to the meeting and you already were done talking about it. When is that like? And we're doing as best as we can on these things, but and we can always do better, but I don't ever hear from the members of the community who were elected to serve that. Meetings are too long. That's just me. Go ahead, Charlie and Ingrid.
Oh, I'm going to move on to the things I think, you know, I I agree with a lot of what you said, Jonathan, because it takes longer. I want to bring you back up what Paula said about minutes for a second. I have the same. Concern. I know Carly, you and I have talked about making officially the recording be our official minutes, but I think it's kind of hard to read that and understand what happened. And. I know Ryan, I don't want to put any more work on Ryan than he already has, but.
Yeah, I I think. Charlie, let's do this. If this is something council wants to do, I think we need to come back with a proposal on. On how much time that's going to take and and, you know, I mean, to to Counselor Hershey's point and everybody else's regarding the length of the meetings. If you can imagine, you know, what what Tony had to go through to pick out the times. Then a staff member has to go through and re-listen to the meeting. And hope that they summarized your comments correctly, and I can guarantee you that they will never get it exactly the way you guys remembered it. And we have over time, and I'm being really serious about this, we had some knockdown dragouts. With former councils over how the minutes were summarized. And accusations that they were being summarized to help somebody else's position. And so that's one of the big reasons why we have a clean electronic recording of the meeting. It is, you know, you can't, you can't change what that is. And and it's available and we have the storage space. And so it is the it is the best record we can provide. Now, we can go back to doing that absolutely. But I think you need to recognize you probably need to add a halftime position to do that because. We have a lot of meetings and they're long. And so it's a and and, you know, so that that's a component of all of this, why we switched over and actually most. Actually, all of my jurisdictions, for the most part, have switched over to action minutes so that it's clear what was in the motion. It's clear what the vote was. And and that that gives that summary. So like I said, I mean, we can come back. With a with a proposal in terms of, you know, cost and staff time associated with it, but I know former clerks. They they had probably half of their deputies' time to two thirds of their deputies' time was devoted to transcribing minutes. So I, you know, it's just, it's just a thing that if you want to do it, that's fine. It's just, you know, there are issues.
I'd like to speak to this. When I, when I looked at council minutes at the last, I actually had my hand up before Charlie.
So so.
So can I just want to speak to this particular issue? When I previously, we did get some synoptic notes, which were great. And when I looked at the last agenda and read through. Just the brief notes of the discussion on P and Z on some of the things that were brought up, that just helps me kind of see a picture of what happened. So I'm not asking for a complete transcription, but previously. Under a different clerk, we did get some quick notes on the discussion points, key points, and. Talking about time, it's difficult for me to go listen through a whole meeting. Define what the discussion points were. So there's a trade off there and Tony spoke to time just a little while ago on what city council has available. To go back through topics that we've discussed previously and see where things stood. And this has come up a couple of times with me in the last six months. So it's just. Something that has some quick address points would be very helpful in in going and reviewing issues that are still before us. And and seeing what responses were made rather than just a, you know, yes and no votes. So. I'm looking for a little time saving again, as Tony is looking for a little time saving.
So let me just use this as an example is at eight forty five, we're scheduled to end this conversation. So I tried to interject to say it's eight forty five. If people want to give another five minutes. But when people jump in over me and sorry to Paula, but like when people jump in over me and say, no, I really want to keep talking about this without an inflection point of saying, do we want to as a body, keep talking about this? I think that's one of the ways we get derailed. So I'll ask that now. Do we want to give this another five minutes? It's eight forty eight. Understanding we do have other items in front of us. Doesn't sound like we're going to accomplish this. Maybe want to have a half hour work session on this, but what does people say about just giving, I'm trying to not be legalistic, give people the last sentence, but. I really need to try to stick to the agenda too. So. Go ahead. Ingrid, do you have a comment on, should we give?
I think we should give it just a couple more minutes until we actually have some direction rather than just identifying some concerns or problems. I think one is that. Carl makes a good point from a legal perspective. And so too does does Paula, meaning that is there, can we request that maybe we get a couple of different ideas for how to do it that maybe allows for. Better management both for us, but that's not a burden on staff. And 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 that's direction to staff. That's not us trying to. So problem solve right here, right now, which I don't think is what I think part of the problem is, is that we always try to. Get in the weeds and come up with a solution when there probably is a solution in another jurisdiction or another municipality that will give us some guidance. So I think giving direction to staff is probably the best next step. And then the other thing that I just wanted to kind of go back on Jonathan is that. You mentioned we used an example where someone spoke longer than, you know, maybe the allotted five minutes and you asked for our help. Unfortunately. My experience is that help comes in the form of an interruption. And I think that that interruption usually comes from a different council member. Tony, who's not on at this point. Oh, no, you are still. A lot of times Tony is our our timekeeper. And I actually think that falls on you. And I think that that that's part of the time management is that Tony interrupts and then you say, oh, you know what? You're right. We do need, we have a lot of things going on. We need to move on. I think that that falls on you. I think that you need to say. In your capacity as mayor, you need to say, we have hit the timeframe, even if you are interrupting the most, I think it's appropriate. It's it's your job. And I think that that allows us to not have counsel Hershey or whomever has decided to do the timekeeping. And I think you do it well, you know, you've handled it diplomatically in the past, and I trust that you can do it. So I would rather give you direction right now that at any point in the meeting, you feel like you want to interrupt. Do it. You got my, you got my vote on that.
Appreciate it. You know, and that's why I think that just real quick, I think that's why I really like having the times on our agendas. That kind of keep us on track that that allows us to, again, hit the inflection point of, hey, we're getting behind schedule. Does everybody want to give this? A few more minutes. That kind of puts all of us on notice that, geez, we just need one more quick comment out of you with it's like mission critical. If it is a, hey, I just want to echo what so and so said. Like, maybe not. Go ahead, Charlie.
Well, I'm going to move on to a different topic, but just quickly on this topic, Carl, your suggestion makes sense. And I don't want staff to spend a lot of time, but. And when they were saying, give us a couple of ways we might be able to do this differently that wouldn't take a lot of time. Let's look at that next meeting or two meetings tonight, because we won't have a bunch of us next meeting. The second comment I have in Deborah in the looking at the agenda items and it's attached to this particular agenda item. You don't take out the old stuff. And move it forward. And I was curious about that when I looked at it today or yesterday, when I looked at my packet. So. I'm sorry, I didn't understand that.
I didn't hear what you said. I heard I heard you say my name and then something about the agenda item.
Real quick, one, let me jump in here real quick. One, Deborah, your audio is really bad, at least towards me. I don't know if any of y'all has experienced that. And it appears that maybe the audio is poor towards you as well with your new system. So just just as a point of order. Also, I think, you know, we we asked to extend the conversation about the minutes. On this agenda item, but now we're seven minutes beyond. So if we want to continue this entire agenda item. Sorry, again, I'm trying to be legalistic here, but like, do we want to continue to extend this agenda item and cut into the next agenda item? Or do we want to be done with this and address these other issues for future agenda changes at a future, maybe council comments this evening? Go ahead, Paula.
Yeah, I I just never got a chance to put in a comment and we did kind of open this with, do we want to discuss Tony's concerns at the beginning so that put everybody else off a little? But I just needed to say I have to leave at ten. That was my comment earlier, plus the idea of minutes. Thank you.
Great. And I'm sorry to cut you off, Charlie. I just want to be very deliberate about what we do. So just don't want to lose it. I'm trying to get some more discipline in here, but. Do we want to extend this to, let's say, nine o'clock, seven more minutes so that we can have further comments?
I've lost Deborah. So my comment is until we get Deborah back doesn't mean anything because I'm just curious. I think so. And I don't, I don't mean that in a bad way. I think everyone to get better audio. So I don't need to talk.
Yeah, I think, yeah, if I may. I think we understood the comment. I don't think we need to go any farther with it, Charlie. I think. Deborah, so we can move on.
Move it forward. If we if we don't have it, we need to still have it on moving forward. So I can kind of look ahead and say, what do we need? And. I'd like, I like having that. That really helps me look ahead. So I appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay, downtown design standards and retail uses. I.
Can you bring over Hannah?
Yeah.
Good morning, Council and Mayor Hannah Clausman with Community Development. I do have a very brief PowerPoint that I'm going to bring up to walk through this discussion. So one moment while I get that going. Great. So this work session is for downtown design standards and retail uses. I have a little bit of background just to update you as well as the public. We did get a lot of responses to the mail out that we sent. So. Some of my presentation is directly aimed at answering some of those questions, a lot of questions that I got via the public and also for your benefit. So. Where this item came from Planning and Zoning Commission, as you know, holds work sessions on items that they'd like to. Make comments on or policies. So this came up as a work session in July of two thousand and twenty one. Staff brought that back with what we heard from Planning and Zoning Commissioners to a public hearing in October. Where we presented what they were focusing on, as well as presented a proposal boundary. For the overlay commercial district that we're going to be talking about. At that public hearing, Planning and Zoning Commission decided to update that boundary. And we brought it back for another public hearing, which we also sent out mailers for in December. Where the boundary was again revised and also some of the components of the overlay district were revised. So a couple of public hearings, we had public comments at some of those hearings, but a lot has been received since we sent out our last. Mailer. So we sent out to property owners within three hundred feet of this proposed overlay district, and we've done that twice because the boundary was updated. And the last notice that we sent out was quite expansive. And so we did receive. Numerous calls and some comments as well. So today, the point is to bring this item to you for further discussion, since it is. It's an important topic, and we thought that talking it through a little bit more with you before bringing it back for another public hearing before city council in March was important. So that is the plan right now to discuss it today, and then it is scheduled for March third, public hearing before you. So staff would bring back what we discussed today. As as a proposal, it might be the same. It might change depending on on what you guys talk about. So a basic summary of what we are looking about, looking at is a commercial overlay district. So an overlay district, as I'm sure many of you know, is something that. Goes over the base zoning, so it's adding additional standards, but the base zoning would also still apply. And really, the intent behind this commercial overlay district is to enhance the pedestrian oriented. Business and service character of the downtown commercial areas. I want to clarify. The intent of this is not for the city to generate more sales or lodging tax revenue. I had a couple of questions on that. Really, that's more of the mechanism that Planning and Zoning Commission sought to achieve this goal of pedestrian oriented and vibrant downtown life. So wanted that to be a clarification and the main components of this overlay district. There's four that I've included in your staff report and have summarized here. So and the language here is very important, which I will get to kind of in our scenarios, but when a non residential building is proposed on a vacant lot. Within the boundary. Seventy five percent of the gross floor area of the first floor would be uses that generate sales or lodging revenues. So we have the vacant lot scenario. The next one is when a non residential building is demolished. And a new building is proposed in its place, regardless of residential or non residential. Again, the seventy five percent of the gross floor area on the first floor would apply. The third component here is also parking, which was discussed at length in Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm sure it will be here as well. So number three, a hundred percent of off street surface parking provided must occur behind the rear wall of the primary building. So this is getting at pulling parking lots away from the view from the public right away and placing them behind buildings. And then finally, this was something that was added in our discussions. Parking structures would be exempt from these standards. As they already have a special use permit review within our code, so they would not. They would not have to abide by the ground floor component. That stated here is, as in our discussions, that was seen as possibly problematic and prohibitive for implementing new parking garages in this area. So now let's get to the boundary. This is kind of a series of slides to show you how it has changed since this discussion began. And also in comparison with some other districts that we have in the downtown. So you can see the orange area is our general improvement district boundary. Just a reminder, parking is not required in that orange boundary line. And that has implications for this as well. And then the green line is our downtown design standards boundary. And also we have the city downtown core, which is the shaded in beige, the larger area there. And then finally, the proposed overlay district as it started and where we're at now. And then finally, the proposed overlay district as it started and where we're at now. So here is where after our initial discussion, staff came back as a proposal, really focusing on Grand Avenue and that commercial area. Once discussing with Planning and Zoning Commission, they thought that expanding that a little bit further into the downtown. As well as adding the north area, Sixth Street, some of those commercial areas were appropriate. And then at their final. Public hearing with Planning and Zoning Commission, the boundary got expanded to meet the downtown design standards boundary. There's a lot of discussion about where this boundary should be and the appropriateness of these of these regulations. In the different areas, we also had in the minutes, if you would see that legal brought up, just the aspect for consideration. Now that this is proposed for the downtown design standards boundary, we have the confluence area. Or Eighth Street Crossing, I believe is it's known now Vogler Park, where the city also has interest in land there. And the appropriateness for including those in these regulations. So this is the boundary that has been sent out. Property owners within 300 feet and every property owner within the boundary itself. And is for consideration for you guys tonight to, oh, it's morning. I'm used to talking to you guys at night. So to try and kind of give you an idea of how this will roll out if implemented as written. Because the language is important. I came up with this spreadsheet because I do love spreadsheets. To kind of show you when it would actually be triggered, which is in the green. And everything with the red X would not be triggering it. So we've got the existing condition on the top there. And the development scenario on on the left. And so just as an example, if you have an existing residential building, whether that's a single family home. An apartment complex, anything that's considered residential. And let's say you demolished it and built a new nicer fancier residential building. That doesn't trigger these ground floor requirements. Moving over to the next column, if you have a non residential building. And you do the same thing, it would apply. And I'm not going to go through every scenario here. I think you guys. Can grasp what I'm trying to represent here. I have some other. Verbally, when when it would apply and when it doesn't. And we received a lot of comments, questions, I would say, from the public of. Does this mean you're going to require me to add this right now to my single family home? Absolutely not. So I dropped a note on the bottom. These standards are really only applying to new development, redevelopment. If you're demolishing your building. Within this boundary, definitely good to come and look at this spreadsheet and be like, you know, I'm I'm residential now. I'm demolishing. I'm going to non residential. Oh, looks like my ground floor has got to be seventy-five percent. Sales or lodging uses, but very, I want to be very clear, also on the parking side. If you're continuing as your single family home, we are not telling you that you have to change your parking right now. If nothing changes on your property, this this will not trigger anything for you. I'm sure I will get more questions on that, but wanted to take just a moment to clarify. All right. So next I did some just kind of. Quick scenarios of, you know, we don't have many vacant lots within this boundary. But this is a vacant lot scenario that you guys know very well, the North Landing. So just throwing out. You know, North Landing is would be considered a vacant lot. And if a proposal came in and these regulations were in place. For a dog park with bathrooms, the bathroom structure itself is going to be considered a non residential building. So in that case, seventy-five percent of the ground floor of the bathroom structure would need to be generating these types of sales or lodging revenues. So I've I've. Given you a quick little graphic here of a tiny bar and then a public restroom attached to it to give you an idea. So that's just one scenario that you guys might have some interest in that applies for city properties as well. This does have implications for when we are developing city owned lands. Not that a tiny bar next to a bathroom is a bad idea from a planning perspective. So I chose another kind of well known building downtown. This is a residential apartment complex. On Blake and Eighth and also within the general improvement district. So if the proposal was to demolish and put in a commercial building. No ground floor requirements are triggered because it was a residential building to start. So really the focus on if you're taking away some commercial, the retail aspect kind of trick is triggered to put it back in. But if you're starting with residential and you're putting in commercial, that's not triggered. So this can get really confusing and we can walk through it later. But again, if you're demolishing a residential building and putting up commercial, it's not required. If you're demolishing a residential building and putting up new residential units, again, not required. So here's another non residential building. So I've I've laid out the proposal as well. In this case, if you're demolishing this building. The ground floor retail requirements would be triggered in both cases, whether you're putting up a new commercial building. Or you're putting up a residential building because it was commercial previously. And here I've noted in the general improvement district, as I mentioned before, parking is not required. So the hundred percent of parking in the rear of the building only applies to this property if they decide to provide parking. But they are not required to provide parking. Okay. So I did want to give just some examples. There's a lot of questions in P and Z. You know, what what is this actually saying? What types of uses would we be able to put in on the ground floor? So sales and or lodging tax generating uses, I've given you just a brief list there. So obviously retail. Restaurants, bars, grocery stores, vacation rental, that is some a category that contributes to our lodging tax. All of those vacation rental properties contribute to the lodging tax. So that would apply. Obviously, any hotel motel bed and breakfast type of use, again, they're in that same category. And I threw gift shop in there because a lot of the things on the right would not be allowed. But if they're accompanied by a gift shop that's seventy-five percent of the floor area, then you know, that kind of changes it. So to think about what would be limited, so only twenty-five percent of the ground floor. For uses like professional offices, you know, medical as well. Hot springs, there's currently no tax generating aspect of our hot springs uses. You know, massage studio, a yoga studio, property management companies, real estate offices, museums, libraries, gyms. These are all uses that don't meet that classification of sales tax or lodging tax generating uses. So as I've mentioned in this last mail out, which was about 500 properties of my closest friends. We did receive numerous phone calls, some written comment that was submitted that will be included in. The public hearing packet, we weren't taking public hearing or we weren't taking public comments for this work session. And so some of the items brought up concern over the boundary and the appropriateness of certain areas within the boundary. Most of the time it was someone saying that they didn't think their property was the appropriate place for more of these commercial oriented. Regulations, concern regarding parking, but I do believe I've alleviated a lot of the concern just in explaining how it would work. Questions on when the standards would be triggered. And then also, you know, the DDA has discussed this item briefly. And they are planning to do so again at their February meeting and will likely be submitting comments for the public hearing in March as well. So in summary, the what staff is hoping to get out of this work session with you today. Is direction on if you'd like to move this forward and in what capacity you would like to move it forward. So real questions on. Do you do you agree with the boundary area as proposed? I also I previously mentioned legal had noted. To take some extra review of the city owned parcels and those impacts. The percent of ground floor area required, that moved from fifty percent to seventy-five percent. That was a change at Planning and Zoning Commission. So again, is that is that the area that you agree with? And then also on the parking location requiring it behind the rear wall. Does council believe that this should be for all uses or only on the commercial side? And then something kind of key in the language is the parameters for what qualifies as demolished. It it in the language, it says when a when a non residential building is demolished. So we need to be very clear in our code language, what qualifies as demolished and what doesn't. Because that will be, that's always a loophole that people will find. So I think we need to be clear on what we mean there. And with that, I'm going to stop talking so that you guys can get to your questions and have a lively discussion. Thank you so much.
Paula and Charlie.
Thank you, Hannah. Once again, as always, a great presentation. I have a few questions, so I'm just going to try to run through them real quickly. When you talk about, when this came up really kind of as a discussion point, it was with A and B Bank and and the loss of retail space. Was there any discussion on that percentage, which I think is another just point for me. But that percentage just being front facing, because I think that was the concern is the front facing along the main street. And my concern on that percentage is, you know, some of these businesses like a bank, that would be very difficult to have twenty-five percent of it only on the ground floor. So I'm just wondering, was there a talk on orientation? Of that percentage.
That's an excellent question. And actually, not so much on just, there was never a comment like, let's just make it the front area. Interesting proposal, more so on like just the sheer area that's required on that front floor. Front facing might be a little challenging, but you know, it could be a very, very skinny Starbucks. But if that's something that you guys wanted to change for that, that has not been brought up previously.
So that that would potentially be a possibility in our discussion. Then the other thing on the complete hundred percent parking in the back, that would mean alley access. And are we set up with the streets department to just have that much traffic going through our alleys for access? Are we talking, there's an access point off this main street, but then the cars go and park behind. Some people are frozen, so I'm not sure that got out.
I I heard you, Paula, but.
Okay.
Very frozen.
Okay.
Or she's very tired and has narcolepsy and just feels sick.
Yes, narcolepsy, and that was it. Well, Jen's there, so Jen can answer.
I was gonna say that we might want to bring Matt Langhorst over to answer that question. But you know, I think that we do use the alleyways. And we, you know, we maintain them, but they're, you know. We have a lot of other roads that get maintained first and some of those kinds of things, but it seems like Matt might be coming over. Oh, nope. Somebody if somebody can help. Hannah said she accidentally, she dropped off. She doesn't know why, so she'll be back.
Jen, who do you want to promote?
Matt Langhorst. Keeper of our alleys.
Yeah, I just, you know, we've talked about redoing these alleys and the need for it. I just kind of picture myself driving down alleys to park. Behind banks and stuff and curious on what kind of impact that would have. There's Matt.
Am I up? Where am I?
You're there.
Okay, long as I'm here. You know, the alleyways are quite restricted in the width that they are. I mean, they're only 20 feet in a lot of cases. That is from building to building. So I guess my question would, Paul asked a very good question, is the main access off of the roadway. And then they're stacking in the alleyway or they're parking towards the alleyway side. Are we trying to use the alleyways as the main access to the buildings? That may be problematic because of poles and everything else. People kind of stack in the alleyways, which we try to control, but is a little bit difficult. Plus, they don't exactly meet fire width. So anyhow, I guess Paul asked a very good question.
That you could have, you know, the drive, the curb cut could be on the main road and then the drive aisle would be exempted. It is difficult then to get that all behind the building, but you know, certainly possible.
And and that.
So I will turn it back over to her.
And with Jen's just recent comment, that would add additional cost to the person doing the. Would that maybe Matt knows this? Is that going to be like a huge increase in cost for a developer to do an access point off of Grand Avenue? And bring the traffic back behind. I'm just trying to get a concept of what we're looking at feasibility wise, if we say it's a hundred percent parking behind.
I'm not sure the cost would be the thing. It'd probably be more of the use of space and probably which is significantly tight spot anyhow. Those lots are pretty small. So, you know, it's a great question.
Okay, I think we we definitely need to kind of address that as we move forward on whatever our directions are this morning. But and Hannah, this one's for you. Because I I read through the packet and I didn't quite catch this one. If it's a residential property, you said they are not required. To follow these if they develop commercial and commercial could be bank spa, anything like that. But if I went down there and said, okay, you know what? I don't want this house here. Instead, I want to build a spa. They don't have to follow these rules.
Right. And that's the language piece that I've had to read over and over and over, do this to make sure I get it right. When a non, when a non residential building is demolished, that's the key. So.
But a residential building is demolished. That was my question.
But that's that's the how it's written is it's only if a non residential building is demolished. If a residential building is demolished, it doesn't apply. And my apologies, just I got kicked out of the city hall. Lovely internet and now I'm on the public. It's saying I'm a little unstable. I think we all know that. So if I I will continue to get back in if I get kicked out again, my apologies.
Okay, one last question and I'll see the kid the floor up. If on the boundaries that you showed us, you showed us a growth of what that boundary is. And I and I have a concern about including the confluence area, but is it possible? And maybe this is a Carl question that we could do a more limited boundary now, see how it goes. And then council could discuss in a year or three years if that really needs to be expanded and legally can we do that?
Oh, absolutely. And and I think that, you know, that boundary question is one of those big ones that staff wanted to come to you and and have that conversation about. There's not, you know, nothing binding you to any of this. I mean, heck, you could do it for a block if you wanted to. You know, or the DDA or the whole town, whatever you, you know, whatever you decide is appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Thanks, Paul. Charlie.
Thanks, and Hannah, and to what Paula said, you know, I appreciate all the hard work and 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 how difficult this is. So one process question first, after today, assuming we suggest several changes or you you take those. Are you going to meet with P and Z again or is it just coming back to our public hearing?
No, the plan, since P and Z has discussed it at length, would be any changes that you make is going to come back to you. And not be reverted to planning and zoning commission. I think they've made their wishes and desires very clear, and this is where they ended.
So I have several concerns about the way this is structured and Paula raised what I hadn't thought about, that is. Problem, Mr. Mayor?
Well, I was just gonna say, do we want to just do questions, get through questions and then start talking about concerns and suggestions after that, just as a point of order?
Guys, several concerns that lead to questions, yeah.
So. Okay, so I'm sorry, we're still on questions or we?
Yeah, I got questions. I'm gonna express my concerns. It frames the questions. So, you know. So the way I understand this, and and be transparent, I own a commercial building or buildings used commercial. My office at eight eleven Blake. And so I'm gonna use that as an example. I have no intent right now to do anything with it. My age, I probably won't, but somebody wants to buy my building and they want to convert it. The way I understand it, because it's been used as an office, is if they want to convert it, they have to put retail space seventy-five percent of the first floor. If they demolish the building, the building, that's with seventy-five percent of that building into into retail. Is that my understanding of what you're doing?
Yeah, so sales tax or lodging, so not just retail, there's a couple of components there. But yes, if they demolished your building, anything new would have to have that ground floor requirement of seventy-five percent. Sales tax or lodging tax generating use. If they remodel and didn't demolish it, then no. It could remain as an office.
There there are a number of buildings. I mean, you've got two, two abilities, two, three buildings for my building. You have the old city police department. I remember it was originally built as an engineering office. If that was torn down, you'd have to put retail there too. Is that correct? That's the building behind the Uso.
Yes.
Is any consideration been given to whether we need that much retail, given the area of the growth that you have? That's a lot of retail we adding if. That's a lot of retail to be adding if, if a lot of these properties got redeveloped into, in from, into non-residential property. Well, the residential got torn down and, and I'm sorry, the commercial, because there's a lot of buildings like mine where office buildings, old houses that are now offices on Grand Avenue, has to be any consideration? Do we need that much retail, particularly given the broad areas of the scroll cells?
I think at the planning and zoning level, they did think that it was appropriate and they expanded the boundary because they wanted to be forward thinking and not behind the ball. So something that Paula had mentioned of like, can we start small and then go big? That was a big discussion at planning and zoning commission as well. And, and the end result was they said they, they didn't want to miss the opportunity. So going a little bit larger, that was the reason. As far as like, do we need this much retail? I don't think that question came up specifically. From a staff perspective, if you can just imagine how many demolitions we've had recently or in the past, I don't even know 10 years, you know, from staff, we're not thinking that this is going to be a mass, you know, very quick conversion. But over time, it certainly could be, yes.
And then my, my last question, and then I have some comments. Mr. Mayor, did you want to interject?
Well, I was just gonna say, just to that point Charlie, just to jump in real quick, I think if there's no scenario, if somebody wants to buy that, and I'd love to hear councillor Russo as a realtor's opinion on this, but if somebody buys your building and says, it makes economic sense for me to scrape and replace this, then that's, that's going to happen so far in the future and be such a dramatic investment in the property that maybe it would be a three-story at that time, commercial building. I don't think somebody who's going to buy it and keep it as an existing use right now in Glenwood. But I mean, to that point, like all of Blake.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna interject as you're now, you're commenting. I have lots of comments.
No, I just, I was just commenting on that specific concern.
Well, I understand and I tried to state the questions. That's what you asked me to do.
Yes, you're right. Fair enough. Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Mayor, but I think that, so my last question is, is we have, as you noted, the GID is included in this area Hannah. One of the things we may have to look at in the future is, does a GID make sense? We have parking issues. We've been talking about paid parking, enforcement and parking. At some point, if we get rid of the GID, we dissolve that district and we dissolve the need, the exemption for parking, which we parted dissolving that district. Does this still make sense if we dissolve the GID? That's the question I have. Has that even been considered? I think we need to be looking at the future. That's a comment, but that's why I asked the question.
That is a very large question and I see Jen's hand up, so I'm going to hand that one over to her gladly.
That's fair. That's all my questions, Mr. Mayor, after Jen answers it.
I think that if we are to eliminate that requirement or that exemption from the parking requirement, that it will have consequences for being able to have some of the uses that you want to have downtown where they will have a hard time parking it. And I'll give an example of where the Brew Garden is, was, and Moonlight is going in. We worked very, very, very hard to make the restaurant use that's going in there work in terms of parking. And so, and it's not in the GID, but it is an example of if you want that kind of use, it would be very difficult to have that if you eliminate the GID. They're part of the reason why you have this concentration of uses that are downtown, that are those heavy intensive uses. And it's possible is because there isn't a parking requirement. We have a pretty high parking requirement. And so either you would have like a, a block face where you see like in other more like linear kind of downtown districts and they take the buildings down behind those to be able to provide the parking. So it will fundamentally change your downtown because you won't be able to have like restaurants, which have a heavy intensive use for parking. I think that that's part of the reason why there is this idea of parking garages. We've done some studies related to parking garages so that you can concentrate, concentrate that parking. But it is, I think it would be difficult, certainly possible, anything's possible, but it may have some consequences if you were to do that.
Charlie, is that good? You good? Okay. Uh, I think I have Shelley and then Ingrid. Yeah, Shelley then Ingrid.
Okay. And then we're going to have comment period after, right?
Yeah.
For discussion, we'll have time. Let's see, where to begin? Okay, Hannah, I think you talked a little bit about kind of trying to define demolition. Is that defined in our code right now?
We actually do not have a definition for demolition. Those two words.
Funny. Do we have one for remodeling?
We have several areas in our code that talk about a certain threshold.
Okay.
That picks in. So we have examples and Jen and I had tossed around some demolition definitions from other municipalities. And some are very strict and some are not so much. I think, you know, we've had stuff from our code where a developer will literally ask, if I leave one two by four from the previous building, am I, do I not have to apply this standard? So that's, that's the type of thinking that we're trying to, you know, get ahead of.
Okay, okay. So and this, this code though is intended to only apply to demolition.
Right, as it's written, just demolition and vacant lots.
Great, great. And then, so you, you showed that table of uses that we would be considered sales tax generating and uses that would not. If we end up expanding our sales tax to include many of those uses, would those uses then be allowed?
Excellent point. Yes. So I know there's discussions on the table that we're looking at in a different committee other taxing items. And so once those generate a sales tax or lodging tax or whatever category it put, got put into, those could possibly, you know, meet the requirement. Yes.
Okay. And then on the boundary is, what was the logic for expanding the boundary so much into the residential areas? Because I know that's, that's where, the area where I live, that's where councillor Hershey lives. A lot of those areas to the west of, like in between Pittkin and the alley behind Grand. You know, the two blocks south of Nine, those, those are almost completely residential areas. So what was the logic there?
Yeah. And, and planning and zoning commission discussed that at length at both public hearings. And so one of the main reasons that was reiterated so many times was that they didn't want to lose out on the opportunity. And specifically the Eighth Street crossing area was identified as wanting that to be included as it was the next logical extension of the downtown area. And in thinking about how that is going to develop in the future, they wanted to incorporate that into the boundary. And so the downtown design boundary, which is something that we've had existing, they saw that as kind of the natural line to be able to do a little bit more forward thinking and not start off small. Because their concern was doing it that way, starting off small, expanding later, which was described as a possibility, might not happen. So they were concerned about that. They wanted to go larger with the understanding that many of these residential neighborhoods will continue to remain residential. If they demolish a residential building and put up a three-story residential building, they can do that. It still won't need to be retail. So in all likelihood, those areas will remain residential if that's what the property owners want it to continue to be. If they start turning and developers want to change that to commercial, then this stipulation is saying, okay, sure, but a certain type of commercial.
Okay. Okay. Was there any talk on, in the realm of the discussion about instead of getting rid of the GID, adding fees to the GID, making it pay for itself?
There was some discussion on GID and maybe legal wants to weigh in here again. Richard, Assistant Attorney, was describing the challenges of amending or doing away with the GID. So I might leave that to legal to, or Jen.
Okay, we can discuss that at another.
Yeah, we can, we can have that conversation at another time. Undoing the GID probably a lot easier than expanding it.
I'm more interested in just adding fees.
Um, that we can probably take a look at as well. Recogn, and I will just say very briefly, so we don't get sidetracked. Recognizing that the idea that not requiring parking in the GID, they're, they're unlinked ideas, right? You, the GID doesn't require that you not require parking or a parking fee in, in the downtown. That was just the deal that was struck in 1980 with property owners. So. All right, Ingrid.
I think my questions are more, I, I understand kind of the, how this came to be and where we are with recommendations, both I think staff has had an opportunity to, to make some recommendations or identify concerns. I think big picture, my question is, did we take into consideration changes to commercial demand in our core? Meaning that this is, you know, we're not going to get ice cream stores over on Blake. It, you know, it's, it's just a little bit too far off the beaten path. So the likelihood is it's going to be uses more along, commercial uses on the ground floor more like attorney's offices or maybe surveyors, things along those lines. And what I'm curious about is if we're seeing any growth or trajectory for our area or nationally, which is changes after more work from home, virtual working, things like that. Are we seeing a decrease in, in need for commercial? Do we have any data that supports making this change? Cause that's really what this is doing.
So it's an excellent point, Commissioner Russo. And I would say, you know, this proposal that's before you is not based on a market study. And if that's something that council would like to look at to really understand, you know, what has been moving to this area? What is the percentage that we have in this boundary now that meets this standard? I, I think that's a fair question to ask.
Okay, yeah. And, and I think that just so we're completely clear on this, is that the way that I'm rationalizing it is use, use councillor Willman's current attorney, you know, law offices. And, and just a couple of doors down from him, at one point in time, someone bought up a couple of the houses. And I don't know if they were being used as commercial or being used as residential, but they, they demolished everything and they built the Blake Avenue condos. And so I'm trying to find this balance. Councillor Hershey, are you sharing now or is that an accident? You're sharing your screen? Oh, it's, it's on purpose. Okay, great. Non-verbal interruptions are still interruptions.
Yeah, just real quick, Tony, just because it makes everybody really small and I can't see everybody's face as well. If, if we could, if you could unshare unless it's part of the presentation, that'd be great. Thanks.
I think that, that this is a really good thought provoking exercise. And I think that there could be some direction on here. My concern, and maybe this is what I'm looking for for clarification, is what prompted this was along Grand Avenue and now we've moved it out so far. I'm just curious if we have data that supports the need to maybe take over some of these historically residential properties and, and convert them to commercial. And I'm just looking for data that supports that.
I would also just to comment on that, you know, along this line, staff has brought up the aspect for consideration that this might, you know, it had, anytime we change the code or add regulations for what can go where it has, it can have impacts. And so we could implement this and depending on what the market does, there might be, it might be very hard to fill all 75% with these types of uses. So I think that's what you're commenting on is getting at, we need to see the need.
Yeah, thank you.
It has been brought up at several moments, but.
Okay. And I didn't mean to do a little merge, like a question with a comment infused right in there. Thanks Hannah, appreciate it.
Thanks Ingrid. Councillor Hershey, questions?
I did want to share that for my question. Sorry, I didn't.
No, I think, listen, I think just as a point of order, I think if you, if, if any councillor wants to share something relevant to their comment when they're speaking, I, I don't have a problem with it.
Now I don't have it, but, um, oh, maybe I do. It, it's just, one second. It's a question. And I mean, I'm certainly would like to see per Ingrid's points, maybe a, and there it is. Um, an ice cream store in Blake. But I just want to remind everyone of the unintended consequences of some of this. And this is picture obviously from, it looks like the early 60s. Um, and you can see that First National Bank, which was then US Bank, and now it's not a bank, right there on the corner and across the street from Bullock's on the left. You know, I, I can't think of a downtown from Aspen to New York to any small town or any medium sized town that doesn't have banks in the downtown area. I understand that a lot of this was a response to A and B. And if that sounds like a comment, Mr. Mayor, I apologize, but I may have to get off soon when Paula leaves too. So I just wanted to make my point clear. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Hershey. All right. Hannah, I'm, you know, I'm in the same kind of a con to everybody else's and I have a lot of ideas and comments. And I'm trying to figure out a way to frame them in a form of a question. So I'll just, I'll try to ask the question legitimately. Why, why was it not considered like, for example, because I think this is good to take individual properties. I don't want to get so fixated on Charlie's specific property or A and B Bank. I don't, I, I think that kind of does a disservice because I think, you know, we have the variance process. But why, why did staff or P and Z, and I guess I'll go to, you know, we do have some residential ground floor uses currently. Why if, if that gets redeveloped? And I'm thinking like maybe the house on like Eighth and Blake. You know, or some, there's residential's that are right next to, and so it's like, oh, is, should that, if that gets torn down, do right now, that would still be allowed to be another residential unit? Is that correct?
Yes.
And, and, and also to that, and, and again, this is just trying to help me understand, but like the, the Western Hotel on Cooper. It's commercial now, but if that turns into like just condos, that couldn't, in this, in this proposal could not turn into condos. That would have to be res, or retail or, or tax generating on the ground floor under this. Is that correct?
If it was torn down.
If it's torn down. Okay. So if it was massively redeveloped, then it could, it could just be residential on that ground floor then. Okay, okay.
And that's, that clarification on, on what constitutes demolition.
Right, right. Okay. I think, I think that's like, for me, that's a real important question. I think Shelley brought that up is what, what constitutes demolition? Is it scrape and replace or is it a, you know, a renovation that's more than 50% of the, I don't know. And that's something I'd like to explore and dig into a little bit, but not right now. So comments, now, now we're going to get some opinions. Paula, yeah, there we go. I was gonna say, I know you have a time limit, so I'd like to hear from you. And then Tony, I know you need to leave as well. So if you had some comments, I might bump you up as well if you have a hard stop at 10, but go ahead Paula.
Wow, it's going to be hard to leave because I'm interested in what everybody says, but these are some of the things that I think is, I'm a little concerned on the percentage because I think that some of these businesses downtown are very viable and important to a strong downtown community, whether it's a bank or libraries or government business that goes on. So I just, I'm, I'm a little cautious about what that percentage is. And in that same respect, on the extent, the broader boundaries. So in my opinion, I think we look at that front facing percentage on these businesses and really consider that as opposed to just the entire 75% of the, of the lower floor. Because me as a shopper, a consumer, a person that lives in Glenwood, it's great to have access to multiple things when I go downtown. Including if I go to the bank and then I go over and shop at Treads or someplace like that. The, I am concerned about the parking and that access in the alleys. So I think we really need to address that and, and see what, what that means. I like the idea of the market study that Ingrid proposed. I really think that that would help us get an idea of what's our future look like and what do we want downtown as a, as a, sorry, as including these businesses that are important as well as viability in a downtown core. And I would also like to consider, I understand where the P and Z is coming from is let's go big and try to address the future. But for me, I, I'm of the realm of let's start a little smaller and expand it as we see the need. And in the packet, there was some concern on how that would influence us on the Eighth Street crossing area. Um, and in the packet, there was some concern on how that would influence us on the Eighth Street Crossing area. Um, so I don't want to bind our hands to something as we, um, really want to be able to explore every opportunity in that Eighth Street Crossing on what we want to see down there. Um, which hopefully we get a chance to address in the next year. So those are some of my comments, and I really appreciate the questions because that helped develop my comments.
Thanks, Paul. Um, Shelley, Charlie, Ingrid.
Okay. Thanks, Hannah. Um, it's an interesting concept to talk about, you know, the downtown kind of expanding and, and having watched the, what's happened in the Highlands area in Denver, which was my husband's old traditional North Denver neighborhood. But as those, um, you know, as that area has really gained in, in popularity and, and changed names to the Highlands, they're having a lot of pressure with coming in and converting single fams, families into, you know, a triplex or a fourplex or in, in putting, going more vertical with that. So I think the parking could become an issue there and whether or not it can all be on the lot, or if we need requirements perhaps to put some underneath the buildings, I don't know if that would be part of that. Uh, but if that's been considered also, but I realize you don't really want parking along the front and that's kind of restricted in the downtown core anyway. So, but, but understanding that people do need to park and if, in some cases, if they don't have good alley access, you know, how do you accommodate that? So, um, just a general comment there. I do have some concerns about losing housing in those traditional downtown neighborhoods. So as far as the boundary goes, I understand where the commission's coming from and wanting to include the Eighth Street Crossing area and the Confluence area and, and, um, you know, old Vogel R Park and some of those. But I do have concerns about including um, from the alley behind Grand. And like I was saying, kind of south of Ninth, you know, there's that block area from School Street to the alley behind Grand. Um, including Pitkin in Colorado and south of Ninth. That I, I really struggle with including that in there because I don't think there's much of any commercial in there right now anyway. I can only think of the historical museum that's down in that area, but, um, so I don't know if it would really apply, apply there. And I'm worried that some of the further restrictions on parking and retail and stuff might actually have a negative effect on our housing supply. So I'm feeling a little protective of that neighborhood and keeping it, you know, residential. And that way, does that make sense? Okay, okay. Um, let's see. I'm also wondering, since Charlie mentioned his office building, we have an office building on Grand that was, was a residential building and we actually have a special use permit to have the office on the, on the main floor. Um, could, wanting to convert that back to residential, would you be able to do that?
Um, let me pull up my chart. So it's, it would be considered, I mean, technically it's a mixed use building currently, which would fall into the non-residential now. If you demolished it and put residential or commercial seventy-five percent of the ground floor would apply. If you remodeled it and didn't demolish, you could change that just fine.
You could stay residential. Okay. So it's that, again, we're back to that definition of demolish. Okay.
Right. If you just changed, you know, the office nature of it and added a closet to make it residential feeling, that's fine. And it would not trigger these regulations.
Okay.
I think for the most part, P and Z, you know, had this in mind of not getting rid of housing stock. That's why it's only if a non-residential building is demolished that this is required. If you demolish residential, it can stay residential. If it is residential and you do a certain amount of renovation, it can also stay residential.
Okay, but do the parking requirements change though?
The parking requirements are straight. So for anything as written now, a hundred percent if you, if it's a new use, right? New development, but that's not going to get triggered. Just like our other code aspects, it's not going to get triggered if you, if you just change, change the use inside of the building without that demolition.
Expand it, you have to meet that parking.
Right.
And it has to be behind the building, correct?
Yes.
Or, okay. Okay. I think that's all I have right now. My main concern is on that boundary and what's appropriate to include and, and what's not.
Thanks, Charlie.
Yeah, so I have significant concerns, you know, about what we're doing here without studies, and I hate studies. So I'm going to be, you know, trying to be somewhere in the middle of all that. You know, and, and, you know, I thought of the building I'm in and, and again, given my age and place where I have my life, I don't see me ever scraping and rebuilding, but um, I would say, you know, if you want to look at buildings, there's a lot of buildings like mine in this district. You go on Grand Avenue, there's a lot of old, it used to be residential houses that are now totally commercial. They're office spaces. Some of those are mixed use. They have offices downstairs and residential above, uh, which I assume that Shelley, your, your building has. But if someone want to come in, for instance, to take the, go into the old police building that behind the Uso, tear that building down and put up a fiveplex or sixplex. We need housing in this community. Why wouldn't we encourage that? And just force them because it's a commercial building now to make it seventy-five percent retail on the first floor rather than allowing the entire building to be residential? Doesn't make any sense to me when we need housing and we have, let's speak, let's be honest, I got a geographic limitation. We're going to have housing. I, I think you're, I think it's, it's that I think that concept needs to be thought through more. Uh, I was going to make a more drawn to a comment. I don't want to do it because I really appreciate all the work that went into this. But that's really, that, that's one of the big concerns I have here is when you take down something that's commercial and you want to put up just residential, it isn't allowed because you're going to have to be, you're going to be forced have that first floor be retail. I, I, I don't envision, you know, and maybe I'm just short sighted, but I don't envision, given what the, the brick and mortar being changed more and more internet that the buildings on Blake Avenue where my offices and, and the old police building, those things are, are going to become retail. I don't think that's going to, retail's going to expand that far. I just don't think that's where it's at. I think the idea was, was to protect those Grand Avenue businesses and and in the future Sixth Street and maybe some stuff along Seventh Street areas like that. So it gets in geographic boundary. Um, but I think when you expand as far as you're doing it, I think, I think it's not, I think you're, you're putting restrictions on, although you can break, you can pull it back off. You're putting restrictions on which could, uh, restrict the ability of people to redevelop current residential prop- property, current commercial used properties that are old residential properties into, into totally residential. So I, I, I think you gotta look at what I see as being point two in your, your criteria. So if you have a non-residential building and they're going to build only residential, I don't think you should have that criteria. That's one comment. Um, I, I'm concerned about the, um, off street parking being back. I think Paula raised, or I think Paula or Shelley ever raised a good concern about, you know, the alleys, um, my building, I've got three spaces. I go back to my building, I have three spaces. Used to be backyard, they, they're parking because parking's harder in my area. You know, I'm in the GID. I need to pay, I need to have that. But it's really hard sometimes getting in and out of there, even though I got a parking lot, which makes it a little bit easier because I can pull through the parking lot into my space. But sometimes it's hard to get out because they wait people park in those parking spots. Um, now I won't say they don't stay within the lines, but they don't stay within the line. So it's hard to back out of that area. And so if you're doing that with all properties, saying they ought to come in and out of the, out of the alleys, I think Matt pointed that out. That could be very difficult. So I think, even though I understand the principle behind it, once you get out of that core commercial area, I don't know if the parking in back necessarily is, is there. And somebody mentioned maybe underground parking, but that significantly increases, I assume, cost of construction. Um, but I think we need to look at that. And our alleys are in terrible shape. That alley behind my office, going behind the fire station, all the way up to behind Uso is in terrible shape. Um, and we don't have the money right now to, to put into the alleys. So we've got to fix the streets first. Um, so I think that's, that's a concern. Um, and I do think we need to consider what we're going to do with the GID as part of this. I don't think we can do this in a vacuum without, whether we're going to, as Shelley said, put a fee in or put parking requirements or something back. I'm not saying parking on site because that would, the purpose of GID back in the early eighties was to allow buildings to be developed in, in really small confined areas and not provide parking. But maybe it's the fee and what do they got parking in lieu of, you know, if they're not going to provide parking on site, then, then something closer to what it really costs is develop a parking structure, which I don't remember the numbers, but I think they're somewhere near thirty thousand per space. So I, that's the stuff that gives me concern. I think the geographic area seems to me to be too, too expansive. I think we get a lot of residential areas that are never going to become, you know, in, in the foreseeable future. Uh, are not, not going to become retail or we want it to be retail. It just doesn't even make sense. I think we should be encouraging redevelopment into, uh, and maybe Shelley's not in favor of this, given her husband's old neighborhood in Denver, the Highlands area, but into, into, into fourplexes and things like that. Maybe we're going to have to start looking at that kind of a thing versus retail. And I, if we got to put retail in those, I, I just doesn't make sense. So those are my comments. Thanks. And oh, one, one other thing, I know Paul's going to leave shortly. We can finish in nine minutes. That's great, but this is a significant issue and I don't want us to be discussing this without Oliver, Councilman, and Tony mentally too. So I'd like to stop this discussion at ten when Paula has to leave. And if we got to have another work session in March, rather than having the public hearing, I would rather do that.
Uh, this agenda item scheduled till ten fifteen and we're not going to stop a, I, 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 at least my opinion is we don't stop a conversation because one member has a commitment that has to leave fifteen minutes early. Um, I, I don't think we should continue the conversation to our February seventeenth menu, men, menu agenda when no one's around, but just because one member has to leave, I, I, I don't think the entire conversation needs to grind to a halt when we still have time left on the agenda. That's just my opinion. So Paul, if you have to step out, you know, you can watch the tape or you can get notes from, from everybody, but I, if we can't conduct business unless we have every single person here every single time, we're never going to get anything done. So I, I, I appreciate, I appreciate trying to be thoughtful of that, but I don't know.
No, I'm fine with that. I just, you know, all I'm saying is keep, keep the comments that Tony and I give when you have the discussion to get to the next point. You know, that's all I'm saying is embrace those comments.
My fault, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, we only have twenty minutes left of this. We are going to have another work session on this, at least one more, several more. We're going to spend many hours, I would think on this. So I, I don't think missing, uh, fifteen minutes of, of one day.
That's, that's fine. This is a, this is not a typical discussion. This is a major discussion about how we're going to look at, at the vision of this future of this town. That's why I'm saying it's not, this is not something that I would say somebody's got to step out. We should not worry about it. This is, this is very important. That's the reason I comment about this particular topic. Normally I agree with you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Deborah.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't think we anticipate rushing this through in any way, shape or form. If we go back, and I, I don't a hundred percent know what Hannah wanted to do, so I'm going to defer to Hannah. But like, you know, if we looked at kind of like the process flow that you guys wanted us to do, it was kind of a work session. Then we go out to the public, then we workshop it again, then we bring it back. So I mean, I think we should take our time. There's no rush really. And, you know, I don't want you guys feeling rushed to make a decision because this is a really big thing. Not weighing in on who should be here or not.
Go ahead, Ingrid.
I was on planning and zoning when this first became a dialogue. And so I think that looking at the impetus behind how we got here is always really important. And how we got here was because of concerns on Grand Avenue. So when I see a proposal that expands quite a bit beyond Grand Avenue, it puts me a little on guard. Um, not because I don't think that there's value in having a discourse over it, um, but rather it feels a little overzealous, maybe a little too robust. Um, where we are with the concern on Grand Avenue is that we should absolutely insulate that corridor and maybe even a little bit beyond it. But I think that the, the, the reason this came to us with the boundaries that it did is because it aligns with the GID. Um, and I think that, that while really easy for, from a staff perspective and even from a public perspective to align those two and say, this is in the GID and these are the rules that just pertain to everything here. I think this, um, this does have some really big impacts on the growth of our community and in not really understanding where we're growing, or it doesn't really align with even what we have established as council. We're saying that housing is really important to this council. And yet this decision and these boundaries almost feel counterintuitive to that goal of housing being a priority. Because it expands out, someone could buy something and all of a sudden, you know, they could be putting quite a few more units in one of these, you know, off Grand Avenue streets. If they bought up a couple of properties, they could build a condo or you're like a apartment complex or condominium complex. And this could prevent them from doing something like that. So I always go back and because of my real estate perspective is just to say, what is the highest and best use of this property? Um, and I think in a town where residential need is so, so valuable, um, this feels too robust for me. Um, so I, I think that there, my, my request would be what are some, some alternatives? How can, what else could we look at? Like, I, I don't like getting on here and us trying to fix it right, right now in one way. Um, what I would like to do is just say to staff, it feels like, and I'm hearing from a couple of the other counselors, that maybe there's not a black or white answer to this, but maybe there's another version somewhere in the middle. Um, maybe there's a few streets off of Grand Avenue, or maybe there's something that better aligns with what I think even the initial intent, even the feedback from the community. I never heard the community say, I want, you know, the whole GID to have limitations. What I heard is the Grand Avenue corridor in particular was the, you know, the concern that was really raised by the community. So that's what I would like to see as a response. I'd like to see some alternatives. Um, does that make sense, Hannah? Because I think it'll come back to you and, and, and so do you think there's a way to look at this in more of a what has historically been used as strong commercial, where's our most tax generating revenues coming from? I think the idea is that we don't want another dental office on Grand Avenue, and I don't know that there's a dental office on, I'm just throwing that out.
Uh, I think there's always a new way to look at things and come back to you guys with different scenarios. I will, just for clarification, you mentioned, you know, the boundary corresponding with the GID. This proposed boundary is way beyond the GID.
Okay, oh, great.
Downtown design standards. So I wanted to clarify that point.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. So that might also be just one of the derivatives you come back with us on. And that would be great.
Counselor Hershey.
Thank you. There's a dermatologist on Grand Avenue and she's great. Um, sorry, I may have to go and I may not. It's, there was this, you guys will read it on Facebook and it's in the news. There was a kidnapping up in Rio Blanco County. So, and it's kind of scary. Um, I, I hate to say this, Mr. Mayor, and you haven't made any comments yet, but I agree, and I just don't want to repeat everybody, but I really agree with Shelley, Paula, Charlie and Ingrid. I, I, like I said briefly before, I'm just concerned we start, you know, mixing the brew and adding ingredients and you mess up the stew. And I think what we have in downtown, as eclectic as it is, as sort of messy as it is, we have a pretty successful mix. And, you know, again, banks, I understand this isn't about A and B, but of course it's about A and B. This is, we have a good mix of businesses and restaurants and stores, and I think it works. You start to try to fiddle with the, um, the free market, whether it's Charlie's Lotterie or a lot of, like Charlie was talking about all those, um, private homes on Grand that are now businesses. Like I think Charlie Dennis Walters used to have an office, Lucy LaFune has an office, there's law offices. There's lots of things that used to be homes that are now offices, but it sort of seems to work. Um, I would just like to talk a lot more about that. And like Charlie, I really hate studies. But before we do anything precipitous, I hope that we would review this. Thank you. Sorry, sorry about the phone.
No problem. Um, you know, and, and, and I think obviously the boundary is something that I'm, I'm hearing a lot of people say is something that we need to look at. Again, I would, I would just caution that we not get very fixated on Shelley's engineering office or Charlie's, um, law office because I think there's so much more applies to it. Um, you know, I, you know, my questions are like, right now, the King Lot, the Bethel. right now, the King Lot, the Bethel, or the Bethel Lot where the Montrogies is right now, I think in general, you don't have to answer this question. I'm just like throwing these out there. In general, somebody could just put ground floor condos, a three-story condo building there. Uh, we do need housing, absolutely. I, I don't think this is an either or conversation. I think this is, I mean, we can address these things. Um, if, you know, Charlie keep mentioning the old, uh, police office uh, uh, behind the Uso, and I think post-independence in there right now, and it's some other just general offices. I, I would say if somebody wants to scrape and replace that, I mean, right now it's a commercial use, so there's vitality. There's people coming in and out of it. There is no real, real parking for that, maybe a couple of spots. But I think if somebody wants to scrape and replace that, you know, it doesn't make sense for that kind of building, you know, just economically as, as somebody who does some residential development, a little bit of commercial, but, you know, somebody's gonna scrape that, it's gonna be a four-story, and there's gonna be more housing. And I think that's something we can require. If you take a, a use that's residential and you want to scrape it or remodel it, that as a minimum, you have to at least replace the existing housing. So, you know, you look at some of these, these houses, like, like Ethan Blake is, is a cute little house, but if somebody wants to scrape that, yes, we would lose one or maybe two units of housing, probably it's a VRVO, but probably for that to make sense, I think this was to, you know, my interjection, Charlie, which I, I'm glad you called me out on earlier. I think that, that becomes a three or four-story building with a lot more housing, because housing also, as we've seen development after development, we're not getting a lot of commercial development in this town. We're getting three hundred units, forty units, sixty units of, of multifamily in this community right now. But we're not really looking for right now. You know, I, I agree with Councilor Hershey. We have a greater collective miss right now. This is about ten years from now, twenty years from now, fifty years from now. That A and B bank, yes, it is partly, this conversation's happening because of that, because that's going to be there and that killed retail on that block, possibly for the next fifty to a hundred years. Uh, surface parking is a problem. I don't, I don't think that parking in the alleys are a, a real problem, because I think, you know, if you want to have parking for um, your, uh, employees, you, you find surface parking a- a- at, um, you know, off-site lot or resident or, uh, visitors park on the street like, like we do for most things right now. So I don't see that as a huge use. I think, um, you know, Tony, you said something about, you know, we don't fiddle with the free market. We do that all the time. It's called zoning. Um, you know, we, we
I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
Oh, yeah, no, no. And I, I know you're not saying that we should, you know, get it to some libertarian hellscape where, where, I get that. I'm not trying to categorize it that, but you know, that's really what we're doing is we're having a zoning conversation. I don't think we're necessarily having a free market, like a big capital F free market. I think if we're really worried about, you know, if we're truly saying that housing, we can't ever do commercial because housing's such a need now, then, you know, housing was still an issue fifteen years ago when we approved the Meadows. You know, if that's the case, then we really should rezone the mall property right now in West Glenwood to just be residential and not commercial. Um, if that's real, and I know that's taking to extreme, Charlie, or your point, but, you know, I think we want to encourage mixed-use development wherever we can and whenever we can. Um, I think public uses, some things that should be exempt, like you, you had in your list, Hannah. I think public uses like museum, libraries, things like that should be exempt from this. Um, you know, that, that is something that attracts, that adds to vitality, people coming in and out. That's, that's kind of what we're talking about. I think surface parking lots are, you know, we should just, private surface parking lots, we should strive to not have. I think yoga, uh, massage, places like that, you know, my hope is, is that, you know, those would eventually be taxed as sales tax producing, because we'll have an attraction tax and it'll be included in that. So I think a lot of those things that we're talking about, those uses, you know, would be allowed and would be used. I think there's always the variance process. You know, I think we should write this in a way so that maybe it's a little, um, I guess overreaching potentially, if the pendulum's gonna be a little bit more, but then we have a, a very, uh, easy and and way for people to go, well, I just want to do this. Um, I know that Hannah, you're dying right now because you hate we're like, oh, yeah, you know, here's what we want to do, but then here's a variance for everything. So I think, you know, people do have that opportunity. So when we start talking about very individual.
Mr. Mayor, I do have to interrupt. I do have to go. We have a meeting with the CPI, so I will, you'll tell me what happens. Okay?
Thanks, Tony.
I'm so sorry.
No, 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 it's, it's fine. You, thank you.
I'll see you at three thirty.
Um, you know, I, I think the, uh, where was I? Um, you know, if we start talking about very, very individual property, like feed my sheep, if that gets redeveloped, you know, would we want that in theory to be retail? Um, you know, I think that's where some of these, these boundaries are. So I guess going forward, you know, I'm hearing boundaries are a concern. Um, we're all taking individual property and saying, yeah, but, yeah, but, and I think we need to keep doing that. And that'll kind of hone what we're trying to do and what we see. Because for every, yeah, but what about this property? There's another property, like, oh, yeah, of course we wouldn't want, um, Anderson Clothier, which is now a commercial, uh, it's not residential. But in theory, if that could get torn down and just be residential, you know, that, that would be a concern to me. I think as we're trying to avoid is some of those things in our core. So for me, let's define what that core is. Is it the GID? Is it this proposal, the DDA, the Downtown Design Standard area? I think that's, that's kind of a key for me. I think that, you know, making sure we're not sacrificing, uh, residential in this. I think if somebody wants to tear down a residential and we require them to have commercial on the ground floor, but then the residential is above, I think that's fine too. Um, and I think the market study, people propose another study on this. I think things we, you know, we're making a, a plan for twenty, thirty years in the future with this stuff could look like. We have no idea what twenty, thirty months will look like. If we had this discussion two and a half years ago before COVID, it would have been completely invalid the next day. So I don't know about doing another study, and I'm all about studies, but I don't know about doing another study that tries to anticipate what the world looks like post-COVID with online retailers, because what we have seen, at least in the last twenty years of this community, is retail come and go, retail area shift. I, I don't know if we can actually get somebody to say predictively that Blake is going to be our next retail core or not. So, Shelley.
I was just gonna throw in that you make a lot of good points, Jonathan. I think for, but specifically some of the areas you, you were talking about, like, like the large bank going in or, you know, other uses, we certainly wouldn't drive retail use more in that particular downtown core. So you kind of hit on it near the end there when you talked about, I think the problem that I'm having is the boundary's a little bit too big going into some of the residential areas. I think it's appropriate on North Glenwood where they expanded it, looking at the, um, the, the North Landing and some of those areas over there. And it's appropriate to include the Confluence area and the Eighth Street Crossing area. But, um, going, expanding too much into the residential neighborhoods, I have a little bit of a a concern about. And part of it is the, the parking requirements, if those are changing. But also the loss of, like Charlie talked about, losing residential and others mentioned. That's a big concern for me is not driving residential out. So maybe like you suggested, we do have a requirement that if you're gonna remodel a commercial building, it's, you know, we're, we're, we're having incentives to have a little more height. And yes, do the retailer or the service establishment on the main floor, but get that residential up top so that we're not losing residential units. So that's all I have to say. A lot of really good comments here that I agree with what Charlie was saying and, um, you make some good points also. So I think we want to find that compromise and, and just tweak the boundary and, and get it to work well. Because we are driving future, future development and, and the future tone and growth of downtown.
Thanks, Anna. Just, just respond real quick, In- Ingrid. Sorry, it, it, but I think, you know, we lost an opportunity at the Meadows where we didn't require residential above those businesses on Market Street. That, that was not a mixed use. I think that, that was missed opportunity. I think we saw the same thing again. I'm breaking my rule by saying A and B bank, but for that to have such a huge surface parking area and not um, have residential two or three stories above that, even at free market and, and zero percent affordable. Um, I think those are just huge missed opportunities. So I'm glad to have this conversation, but I, I'm, I, I, there's a lit- a little bit of urgency. I don't want this to take several years, because if half of, uh, Cooper gets bought up and becomes this, I think, man, I'll just, that'll hurt, hurt my heart a little bit. Go ahead, Ingrid. I'm sorry.
Hannah, I should have asked this earlier, but in the, if this, as it stands and is presented to us, were to, um, become code or, you know, the, the way we're gonna interpret it. Um, and A and B, I'm just gonna use them because we keep throwing it out, had come forward, how would that look different? Based on this.
Their ground floor would have been seventy-five percent sales or lodging tax uses. So they could have had twenty-five percent of the ground floor be the bank.
Okay.
They would have had to move all their bank offices up to a second floor or higher. And that parking would not be immediately along Grand. Uh, so that would have been, that would have been required to be tucked behind the building.
Okay.
That's how that would.
Okay, great. I just thought, you know, that we, we keep throwing it out there. Let's use some real-time examples on how that would look. So, um, I will, I'll make one last comment, and that is that I, I really do see value in some implementation of this. I, I see a long-term aesthetic. I think that, that land use and zoning, I think, insulates a community and can keep it economically stronger, especially as we grow. Um, and it's not quite so willy-nilly about how things look or feel or function. Or in the case of a city that, you know, is strong tourism-based, um, we also insulate ourselves economically. I'm just wanting to be cautious that we are, like I said, we're not overzealous or too robust in the application of this. Um, but what, rather, we look at where there really was either a past concern or comes, like Jonathan just mentioned, some future concerns, and we, I, we identify those areas and implement it in those areas without the detriment of losing potential residential opportunities.
Charlie, last word.
I will try to make it short. I, I agree with what Ingrid just said. Um, and Hannah, I guess I question, and maybe his dovetails into it, Carl might need to respond as well. What do you see, Hannah, you going from here and tying into that to Carl? Is this worth us sending back to the P and Z and say, here's our comments? Do you guys want to look at this again and, and come back to the council as another recommendation? I, I do agree with Jonathan says, I don't want to, I don't want this thing to drag on forever, but a month or two is, is getting this before us to get to spring is important, I think, but I don't know if we need to do it in March. So those are my, Carl.
Let me, let me talk about process just for a second. Um, this has been beaten pretty severely by the Planning Commission. Um, I don't think you're going to get a, I mean, they're, they're saying, here's what we think. Um, they've been pretty clear about that. That's what they came up with. Um, you know, you, you have the ability to modify that. I would suggest, um, we maybe look at the beginning of April. Um, we were just, um, staff was just going back and forth on what's in the queue and what we have to do between now and then. Um, look at bringing it back in front of you, probably at a work session again in April, uh, the beginning of April. Um, taking into account some of the comments that you've made and, and some thoughts on how to get you maybe some of, more of the information that you ask for. I don't think at this point it, it would be productive for the Planning Commission to have to churn it again, because I think you're gonna get the same thing back from them. They're, they're pretty comfortable with where they got to and why they did. Um, and frankly, they have a lot on, you know, their plate as well in the next couple of months, and a couple of special meetings scheduled just to get through it all. So I, I think we come back to you guys.
Yeah, and I, I would suggest, there's just a lot of questions of how did we get here? How did we get here? What was the thought? And I, I think that that's probably best answered by the Planning Commission. So that, your question, Charlie, of do we kick it back? I guess I would suggest maybe in April, we have a joint work session between our planning and, and City Council.
That, that actually would be good.
And that's what I was gonna suggest, so, yeah.
Sorry, Shelley, I didn't mean to interrupt. I, I looked at the minutes, it's back to what Paul was talking about earlier, but when you look at the minutes, I, Hannah, I understand there was a lot of discussion about these issues, but I don't get, because the minutes are brief. Are those planning zoning meetings, are they recorded? Can I go back and look at those?
They certainly are, yes. YouTube is your friend.
Thanks, that's all I mean. I'll take the time to do it. Thanks.
And, and just for a staff point of clarification here, as you're moving forward, because it sounds like, you know, this is gonna take more time, which is great. We can do that. Um, the notice that went out to three-hundred-foot property owners did include that we were planning to hold another public hearing, and we did name the March third. So when we end this conversation, it would be great if, um, the mayor or someone explicitly states for everyone listening that there will not be a public hearing on this matter on the third, and that we are taking into consideration with additional work session time.
There will not be a public hearing on the third.
Wait, hold on a second. Don't we need, mechanically, don't we need to call that to, to order and march and then continue it so we don't have to republish?
Uh, well, I, it's fine if we republish. I'm not worried about that at all. I just want to more, we're more concerned about making sure the public understands. We're not trying to, you know, you, you know, be less than transparent. We're just recognizing it's an important issue. It's gonna take more time. So, you know, Jonathan's gonna provide that quote, and we may even do a press release on that, Jonathan, just because this is of such import. Um, and that may be the best time to, you know, that, at the work set, you know, we'll just work on the quote for you.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll provide it. Uh, we will not be having the March third as noticed meeting. This council has decided there's a lot more, uh, process that we need to have in addition with, in conjunction with our planning and zoning before we have that meeting. So until further notice, we will, we'll be delaying, not canceling, but just delaying that meeting slightly, so we can have further conversations. And oh, by the way, we're not gonna have a full council there March third. I will be gone at a cast meeting, so we couldn't have it anyway. Um, what else? Anything else for the good of order on this topic? We're, we're one minute behind, but, um, okay. Hannah, thank you so much. What's that, what's that, Charlie?
I said, wish you had March third without the mayor. I gotta tweet you back.
No problem, no problem. All right. Uh, next item is, uh, interviews. Do we have? Who am I bringing over? This is, uh, tourism interviews.
It's Pat McMillan. It should be. I think that's what we haven't done.
And she did not respond, so she may not be joining us.
Okay, and she was, we have confirmation that she knew that she was on for this time and she acknowledged that, or she just didn't respond at all to anything?
She just never responded again, from what I understand.
Well, that maybe makes things a little easier. All right, I guess.
Briefly, as long as we're talking about that, I, Deborah, I sent you something yesterday. Um, and I don't think I sent it out to everybody. I have, I didn't bring my city computer.
I did send that to everybody, yes.
Thanks. We have the issue that we'll talk about tonight, but one of the Susan Emery is no longer qualified to serve in, uh, I think the tourism, but would be in the lodging. And so I'm gonna make a proposal, how we do those appointments, when we come to those appointments tonight. But just, I want to make sure everybody had that information.
Okay. All right, um, you know, given that, especially since it's just the four of us now, and I think we've probably given staff enough direction, we're probably done. We don't need to extend, just because we have the extra time, we don't need to fill it. So if it's good with everybody else, let's just be done twelve minutes early. Okay, we'll see you tonight. Thanks, all.